Good evening. Good evening, can you hear me? Yes. Hi, welcome to the City Council meeting, Santee City Council meeting. Let the record show that the regular meeting of the Santee City Council is now called to order. Let the record show that Mayor Minto is absent. I am here. Councilmember Trotter, Councilmember McNellis, and Councilmember Hall are present. Tonight, the invocation will be given by Pastor Jame, Jamie? Jamie Pangman with Santee United Methodist Church. And I have a short bio to read, very short. So Jamie is the Reverend, as I said, he's the senior pastor and he's been with the church for four years. Jamie got his degree at Boston University School of Theology. And he has shared with us that Santee UMC is honored to have partnered with the Habitat for Humanity, and I know there's a lot of Habitat for Humanity people here tonight, on the Town Homes Project on First Street that is being discussed this evening. We will also, they will also be holding a trunk or treat event on October 20th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. So Jamie, if you could lead us in the invocation tonight, and then also after you're done with that, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
All right.
Please rise.
Let us pray. Holy One, we come together this evening seeking to serve our community and the people who live, work, and play in it. We ask your blessings on all us gathered here, and especially this evening, on the people who have been called to lead us. Please help us to remember that we are called not only to be leaders, but servants, and that it is our responsibility to serve the common good of all. Remind us that no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbor, our sibling, and throughout the ages, you have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us, our children, our elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Grant us the wisdom and the courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May we always be guided by your Spirit, which guides us into deeper relationship, into deeper justice, and into deeper love. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold great and right and true. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, I have two-
Who are those handsome guys up there?
What?
Who are those handsome guys up there?
On that note, I have a proclamation to read, and I'll read it from here. Whereas in 1976, the Tree City USA program was begun by the Arbor Day Foundation and 42 communities and in 16 states participated. And whereas in 2022, through the Tree City USA program, there were 3,559 recognized cities, 1.5 million and some change invested in urban forestry, and over a million trees planted. And whereas in 2023, the city of Santee will plant 33 new trees in Weston Park located in the northwestern area of Santee. And whereas neighborhoods with trees are seven to nine degrees cooler than those without, trees reduce energy costs up to 25% by shading buildings and protecting them from the winds. And whereas homes, I thought it was horns, homes with trees have higher property values. And whereas green space plays a major role in improving mental and physical health, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Laura Koval, on behalf of the Mayor John Minto and the City Council, do hereby proclaim October 7th, 2023, as Santree Day in the city of Santee, and urge all citizens to celebrate Santree Day and to support the efforts to protect our trees and to plant trees so future generations will enjoy a more beautiful Santee with health and well-being sustained by great natural resource. At this time, I'd like to call the council down to help-
Present the proclamation.
To Dean Valesko. Hello, there we go. All right, Dean, would you like to say a few words on behalf of Spark and Santree Day in Santee?
Of course I would. I love talking on a mic, you know that. I'm just, I'm super excited for what the council and the city and the staff and us in Spark get to be a part of here in Santee. We just have an amazing town. I mean, we, a couple of years ago, right after COVID, we got to plant a bunch of trees, and that was a super cool event we did over there at Wood Glen Vista. And I'm excited that, I'm excited to receive this proclamation for Santree Day, and let's go our parks. I love our parks.
Thank you. So Pam is now going to take a photo of us. Call up Jamie Sly, please. Uh-oh. Okay.
Okay. Okay. Whereas National Manufacturing Day has been observed annually on the first Friday in October to acknowledge the significant contributions of manufacturing to the national, state, and local economy. And in recent years, this has been expanded into a month-long celebration of this industry. And whereas in recognition of California having the largest number of manufacturers in the nation, with over 37,000 firms representing virtually all manufacturing sectors, California Manufacturing Technology Consulting and its partners celebrate the entire month of October as Manufacturing Month, California. And whereas Manufacturing Month, California, will provide an opportunity to highlight the manufacturing industry throughout California, which produces an output of $3.2 billion and employs over 1.2 million Californians with average wages over $112,000. And whereas East County Economic Development Council is hosting their eighth annual East County Manufacturing Expo on October 3rd, 2023, to showcase the region's manufacturers' outreach to the future workforce on career opportunities in manufacturing and provide educational and business resources. And whereas the Santee community is fortunate to be the home of over 100 manufacturing companies, which represent an important segment of the local economy, contributing both highly skilled and high-paying jobs. Now therefore, Vice Mayor Laura Koval and the City Council do hereby proclaim October 2023 as Manufacturing Month in the city of Santee, and encourage all citizens to celebrate the importance of manufacturing within our community and recognize the contributions of East County Economic Development Council and California Manufacturing Technology Consulting in support of this industry.
I'll be there on October 3rd for your opening ceremony. Would you like to say a few words on behalf of the East County Economic Development Council?
Hi, my name is Jo Peterson. I am the Director of Learning and Development for Taylor Guitars, and I am the chairperson of this year's event for the seventh year in a row. This year, we're having it at Grossmont College. We expect over 400 students are going to be bussed in this time from local high schools and San Diego City High Schools to learn about 50 different manufacturers we have here in East County. And if you're not doing anything Tuesday afternoon, 11 to 2, drop by the college, check us out. We're going to have a lot of great activities and good community involvement.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent calendar, are there any items to be added, deleted, or reordered on the agenda? Councilmember Hall?
No.
Councilmember McNellis?
None for me, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Trotter?
No ma'am.
City Manager?
No ma'am.
City Attorney?
No ma'am.
City Clerk?
Yes ma'am, I have a speaker on 1, 2, and 3.
All right. Let's call up the speaker on item 1.
Motion to approve the rest of the consent calendar.
There's a motion to approve?
Second.
Second, please vote.
Mayor Minto is absent.
Thank you.
Approved what?
All in favor.
Oh my goodness. All right. So let's call up the speaker for item 1, please.
Truth.
What a bunch of rookies up here, man. This is Truth, the little activist with the recognizable shoes, or at least that's what a lady called me yesterday. I noticed that this item, time, wait a minute, that, uh-oh, this is what happens when you don't have a lot of time to write any speeches, okay. I noticed this time, this item, has a little bit of a longer write-up. It now says resolutions do not even require publication. I think every kind of item deserves and requires publication for both the public record and public knowledge. I'm all about public knowledge because it's very much lacking, and not for lack of information or for lack of accessibility to information, but for apathy, which is a real drag. That's actually me just copying a lyric of a song. Overall, I oppose approving ordinances and resolutions by only reading their titles and not their contents. Oh, did I say oppose? Yeah. Sorry, I'm dizzy too. Or at least a summary thereof. However, I do approve of rejecting any items that do not have more than just their title read, so there's a little counterpunch. That concludes my comments.
Motion to approve, item 1.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second, please vote.
Councilmember Hall, can you lock in your vote, please?
Yeah, that's what I want.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item 2, please.
Truth.
There were a total of five motions made by Rob and only two for Dustin, but you guys need to remember, this is not a competition, and what's wrong with you guys? I also noticed that there's this public speaker named Truth that speaks on a lot of items. I mean, man, they need to get a hobby, get some sleep for once, or just quit caring so much. Now, it was, it was good because I remember John, who is not here, wished me a happy birthday without even knowing what day it was. And I'll save that for, I'll save the next comment when I see him. Uh, you know, oh, well, no, you know what I'm going to say about that, I'll change mine. He gave me a heads up on possible speaking time reduction, which I really appreciated, so everybody in this room can know how nice he is. And I may be used to crazy, short speaking scenarios. Example, one time in San Diego, I was going up to the mic, they said, oh, the speakers are going to have two minutes. And then as soon as I got to the mic, they said, oh, a lot of speakers just called in, you will have a minute and a half. And then I began. And that day, not in San Diego, here, Speaker Brother Steve, he had so many good solutions for direct action for positive change that I hope to learn from and use one day, way past personhood. That guy was ingenious in even saying, I haven't even done that. In his council report, Rob mentioned some rowdy juveniles at the summer concert series. And I'm wondering, did anyone think about the fact that those young punks are actually from your generation? That's just a thought. In John's report, he talked about a children's business fair and how the teens didn't like the name. And personally, you know, I prefer to be called Whipper Snapper, but my idea for this event is the youth business bash. There's mine. In Marlene's report, she said Santee's stepping into the 21st century, and somehow she found 6,000 sandbags, and where was my question? I'd like to know where you find 6,000 sandbags out of nowhere. But I'd argue we didn't need sandbags when we have one giant sandbag we could have scrapped. And Laura, you missed this, John, you missed this too, because, you know, they even wasted a whole bunch of taxpayer money giving away these huge bags at the regional plan workshop. I didn't go up anywhere with time, most of see. And so next time there's another faux hurricane emergency, you know, we could literally get sandbags from Sandag. And I'm going to say, this is one of the only city councils where the invocation actually means something. I don't know if people realize that pretty much everywhere else I go, it's just a clerk reading it, or it's political in nature. I bet nobody knows that, it's, it's pretty annoying. But anyways, overall, these minutes are incredibly accurate, and I like them. Thank you.
Motion to approve, 2.
I have a motion from Councilmember Trotter.
Oh, second.
Second from Councilmember McNellis. Please vote.
Next item, Truth.
All right, some spending payment of demands. Laura, what a rookie, not reading the titles. Nah, just kidding. There's over, there was over $1,450 for encampment cleanups by the Alpha Project, if anyone wanted to know how much it costs to clean that mess up. Ron got over $30 for meeting supplies, and I'm assuming that's for some of those unhealthy candies or soda, because the nearest Whole Foods is just too far. And I would seriously give you an organic chocolate bar if I had a new one right now, which I do not, sorry. There's over $3,500 to Consultant Harrison Associates, Inc., and $7,000 to Spitzer Consulting. I have a feeling it's the same spending as last month or last meeting. And there was $898 for Marlene, Ron, John, and Laura each to go to the League of California Cities, totally missing Sandag, making me have to talk to Rob instead, and Patricia Dillard instead of Laura at Borders. You know, you guys missed some crazy stuff, so you need to watch back the video if you haven't already. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember McNellis. You, second it.
I second the motion.
Second from Councilmember Hall, please vote.
Councilmember Trotter, please lock in your vote.
Oh my gosh.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, now we move on to non-agenda public comment. Do we have any speakers?
We have five speakers. The first speaker is Steve White. A reminder, you have three minutes.
Hi, guys, I'm Steve. I'm a Santee resident since 1978. I'm here to address the council as to if they are aware of the aggressive homeless situations going on where Walmart, Target, Chevron is. You guys are? Okay. I'm also here because my sister's here too, and she was involved in two of those incidences. And one of them, the police were called, the guy that they caught did have a knife and did have a gun. And my three-year-old niece was, was, was with, with my sister, and now she feels she can't go to Denny's anymore because they were chased in the car. So my question is, what are you guys doing about it?
So for public comment, we're not allowed to do a back and forth, just so you know, but we hear what you're saying, and the, the city manager would be happy to get in contact with you, get your, I think you filled out a speaker slip?
Correct.
And then she can share with you all the actions that we've taken as a council, because we feel as you do.
Okay, I'm just, okay, because I'm just saying, it's a shame that, that as of today, since, since being a resident since 1978, my mom has to carry pepper spray, my sister, and a taser now. So I'm just hoping, hoping you guys do what you do. Don't forget, next year's an election year as well, too, so, you know, you know, like I said, I just hope you guys do something about it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rob Ridge.
I'm not sure if I'm out of turn here, because I think my comments were linked to Habitat, so perhaps it should be afterwards.
Change it to that item.
Okay. But did I check the wrong box?
Yeah, you marked non-agenda, but it's fine, we can put it-
Change it to that item, sir.
The next-
We're going to detect the time from zero.
Next speaker I have is Patrick Henry.
My name is Patrick Henry, I'm representing the Santee firefighters. I'm here to talk to you guys tonight about the feasibility study for a half-cent sales tax. A little background on myself, I, I went to college at San Diego State, have a degree in public administration, and a very influential professor, Walt Eckert, he was the county CAO, he was in charge of the county while he was teaching our class. First class, he has a sit-down and says, I'm going to teach you the first lesson. He says, always invest in infrastructure yesterday, because if you're investing in it today, you've already cost the taxpayers money. And I know you guys agree with this. The Santee firefighters are ready to take action. We're ready to answer the problems in the community. This is a dilemma that the decision-makers have to deal with. In addition to that, I normally, at this time of day, read a book to my six-year-old at home. And I brought two books in today. These are the Santee Fire Department's strategic plans from 2006 to 2009 and 2008 to 2013, well-intentioned documents. Both of them include capital improvements that went unfunded for our fire station. It was built in 1968, it's never had a renovation, it is dilapidated officially. In addition to that, our city has grown, and we have studies that we took a year long to do by Triton, AP Triton, and those studies stated that we have dead zones in our city, and we need additional infrastructure. We had a pretty creative idea by our fire chief to fund those, but it was extremely expensive. The only thing that's going to fund it is a half-cent sales tax. And the Santee firefighters are ready to take any necessary action, and we're collaborative with the city. But the city needs to make informed decisions. And the only way at this point to make an informed decision is to direct the city manager to hire a qualified expert to perform a feasibility study. That's going to give us everything we need to know. And as a council, no matter how you stand on the subject, you have to make an informed decision. And we're here to work with you. I brought some friends with me tonight, and they're ready to campaign. Thanks.
So just so you know, the city manager is well aware of this. She understands where the council has already prioritized these items in our long-term strategic plan, and she's already doing the background that is necessary to move forward towards a feasibility study.
I appreciate that. I look forward to working with everybody. Thanks, guys.
Next speaker I have is Truth.
All right, Rob, did you enjoy the Sandag show? Because it sure was weird to see you at 7:30 in the morning, some of my friends doing a press conference. And hey, we both made it on the news, I don't know if you know. But while I was speaking, after the news said, who likes taxes? And then they played me. The news said you were outside in protest. I thought it was a press conference, but apparently not. You guys are out there protesting. And I don't know if you noticed, but Jack Shu, when he took a picture of the thing, I said, what are you doing, Jack? I love Jack. Disagree with him, he's totally wrong on everything, but he's a great guy. Now about the town center concepts from the last meeting. 10 to 20 years ain't happening. The financing ain't happening. Someone reminded me that the butterfly in the mural represented transformation from bedroom community Santee to urbanized Santee. Little hidden message for those that didn't catch it, including me, I totally skipped my mind. Also, that money pit amphitheater is right next to homes, and I'm pretty sure they didn't buy those homes thinking, you know, I'm going to lose some sleep one of these days, or have the possibility of people sleeping there and using it for encampments. But you know, all those days, they were really fun, exciting, colorful, but somebody better start chalking up their own money to pay for this amusement park fairy tale land, because if not, you better wake up and realize you live in Santee, not downtown Disneyland. The city doesn't even have streets in good condition. How would the roads keep up with the increase in traffic? And if all those ideas were, were somehow able to be funded and built, wouldn't that just change everything that makes Santee what it is? I think it was too easy to get lost in possibilities rather than prioritizing the fundamentals like roads. I think you all need to decide, to decide if you're trying to improve Santee or you want to transform it into something else. Because if Santee represents something akin to Americana, like Laura said, then the ideas of places to hang out late at night are contrarian ideas. In mid-century America, everything closed by 6:00 or 7:00 p.m. There were no fancy amphitheaters, or splash pads, or murals in small towns back in the day. People's lives and expectations are vastly different than they were. So I think a better description would be modern Americana, and it would be wise to further define that concept, idea, and limit what doesn't fit. The last meeting, all the mention of patriotism, Laura's Americana defining, and hearing people speak about freedom honestly made it very difficult for me to not smile, because there's a lot of people all over this county that are missing out, and I wish they could hear it, too. And I'm going to put it in perspective. All the different council or board or committee meetings that I've gone to this year, I've never heard any of that with the same level of passion. And usually, I just don't hear it at all. And very rarely do I hear anything of substance, and many people wonder what bubble some of these fellow representatives are living in. In fact, at the San Diego City Council, they're actively trying to censor free speech by having these staged callers call in and say ridiculous things so they can put us all in a category and go, look, everyone's crazy, don't let them talk. Well, there you go, you know, that's my thing.
The final speaker I have is Michael Ranson.
Good evening, council. Just a quick, two things. One, I want to say thank you very much to the city and to the council for approving the requested funds that I came up here and asked for, for floral arrangements for the memorial. So we'll have floral arrangements at the memorial every year after, every Veterans Day, starting this Veterans Day, and Memorial Day. I also have an offer for the city, because I have long thought, and I don't know, I don't think we've talked about it, but I have long thought there should be a POW MIA flag flying at the memorial as well. And I have talked with friends, and I've talked with veterans about it. They all thought it was a good idea. I thought, how could we do that? So I went straight to the flag vendor and the person who supplied the flag pole, spoke with them about all of the details of it, the size it should be and all of that. And I'm here with the POW MIA flag and the new clasps, and paid for a servicing of the pole so that they can come and do the servicing and add the clasps and add the MIA flag for us before Veterans Day. So I just need for the city to discuss it amongst yourselves and say yes. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor, would you like to have the last speaker, because we only have one more speaker?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Brianne, do you want to come on up?
All right, thank you for that, I appreciate it. So I'm here once again, you know, kind of supporting Truth and still trying to, you know, get my message out and say hello to my new friends. So I did have an interesting morning this morning. I'm obviously from North County, and I was talking to a gentleman, Gillespie Airfield, I'm assuming that probably several of you guys have flown into it, you know, because of the proximity to where we're at. More or less, you know, he, he advocates a lot for it to try to get better funding from the, let's just say, the local governments, you know, county boards, that type of thing. But he told me an interesting story of how some of his people that he works with, you know, were, were talking about how to try to get better representation. And as they had called a representative from the- And as they had called a representative from the state government, he told me, you'll never guess the first thing that he said. And I sat there and was thinking, and I listened to him. He says, "They asked, 'How much were you going to donate to the campaign?'" And he thought that I was going to be shocked, which I absolutely wasn't shocked, because that's really the premise of the message that I want to get out. And, excuse me. But, you know, there's a lot of people right now that do feel our country needs, you know, kind of a change, a little bit of a paradigm shift. A lot of people are scared. A lot of people are trying to figure out what's next. You know, we had a guy talking about homelessness. It's obviously a problem that's just accelerating at this point. You know, we got inflation, we got, things are upside down in a lot of ways. So really, what I want to say, what I would like to see happen once again is the citizenry provide a platform where campaigns are ran from. And it's, what it's going to do is it's going to obviously take the money out of campaigns. It's going to require representation to occur without people asking, you know, how much money they're going to get to their next big expensive campaign. All these campaigns are digital. We're going to have a responsive government from it. We're going to create an engaged society, just like Truth talked about in her, you know, her first little speech there on the consent calendar. We have an apathetic citizenry at this point. And that's really allowing these things to fester and accelerate. And we really need to get past that. We really do. And that's why, man, when I, you know, I'm glad I didn't see that lobbyist guy here, because I, you know, straight up, I kind of didn't like how he, you know, kind of told me that he's okay with it. You know what I'm saying? That he's down for this system. I understand he, you know, makes five grand a month from six different entities, but, you know, well, they all do, I get it. And they all got a wise up, because right now, people are suffering. And, you know, there's a better solution. Thank you.
No for the speakers.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to public hearing. Item eight, am I right? Councilmember McNallys?
You are correct.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing for tentative map TM 2023-0001, development review permit DR 2023-001, and density bonus DB 2023-0001 for a multifamily residential development consisting of 17 units and related site improvements on a .65-acre lot located at 8932 First Street, APN 384-106-16 in the Town Center specific plan area with a high-density residential R22 land use designation and finding the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to the Class 32 infill exemption. And the applicant is San Diego Habitat for Humanity Incorporated Planning and Building Department. Michael Coyne.
Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor, members of council. The item before you tonight is a request by Habitat for Humanity for a tentative map and development review permit and a density bonus for a 100% affordable housing project consisting of 17 units. As you mentioned, it's on a .6-acre property at 8931 First Street in the city's town center. The site is shown on our Housing Element Sites inventory and will help towards the city's regional housing needs allocation arena for low-income housing. Before I go into details about the project, this is a unique project. It's one of the first affordable projects we've seen since the demise of the redevelopment agencies. And so I'll briefly go over Habitat for Humanity and how it is that people qualify for these affordable units. So this is a slide that was provided by Habitat for Humanity, and it kind of points out their main key points about the organization. Habitat for Humanity is a nonprofit organization that helps qualifying low-to-moderate income families become homeowners or improve their homes. This particular project would serve low-income families in Santee, earning 80% of the area median income, which for a family of four would be approximately $110,000, as shown in this chart, where the area median income for San Diego County is $116,800, to put it into context. Applicants are selected based on their level of need, willingness to follow Habitat's required criteria, and the ability to pay their mortgage. Selected families are also required to help build their own homes, as well as those of other families, in partnership with community groups and sponsors. In addition, they must take financial planning classes. Habitat works in about 1,400 communities throughout the United States and in 70 countries throughout the world. The local chapter serving the San Diego community was established in 1987. The proposed project is located on property currently developed with a single-family home at the southwest corner of Park Avenue and First Street, approximately 400 feet west of Magnolia Avenue, as highlighted in this aerial image. The project site is located within the Town Center specific plan area and has an R22 designation, which is a high-density residential land use designation allowing 22 to 30 dwelling units per acre. The site is surrounded by a mixture of single-family and multifamily commercial development. Immediately surrounding the sites are single-family homes and the Santee United Methodist Church, which has donated this property to Habitat for Humanity after a bequest from the prior property owner to the church. And auto body shops to the south, a vacant former Walgreens building to the east, and some additional single-family homes to the west of the site. Here's another perspective of the site. This is looking at the site in a north-northwesterly direction. This is a recent photograph of the site. The first photograph shown here is taken from First Street, looking west onto the And the second photograph is taken from the alleyway that abuts the site on the rear of the property, and this is looking west-northwesterly onto the property, onto the rear of the property. Here is a site plan of the proposed development. The development would consist of five buildings with associated parking, drive aisles, utility improvements, recreation areas, and landscaping. Vehicular access would be provided from an existing alley. It's shown here as Third Street Alley, and a newly proposed driveway and fire lane that would serve the interior of the project. A total of 34 off-street parking spaces would be provided, 26 in garages and eight as surface parking spaces. Five of which, five of the surface parking spaces would be dedicated, would include EV chargers at each spot. And the red lines shown here depict the vehicular path of travel to each of the unit's garages, because each of, 13 of the 17 units would be townhome-style units with their own attached garages. Excepting Building One, trash collection would be provided to each individual unit. A trash enclosure would serve future residents of the units in Building One, as shown here on the southwestern corner of the property by the alley. As an addition, a six-foot perimeter fence would be provided between the subject property and the adjoining property to the west. As an affordable housing project, the city is required to reduce or waive development standards pursuant to state density bonus law. As such, the project proponent is requesting a three-space parking reduction, a reduction of the building setbacks, and a waiver of the individual unit private storage requirements. The development will also include a central common open space area, which would consist of these elements shown here, including playground equipment, picnic tables, benches, bike racks, and of course, landscaping. The proposed buildings would consist of three stories and have a maximum height of about 38 feet. Four units would be built in one building, Building One, highlighted here, with two one-bedroom flats and two three-bedroom units, respectively 665 square feet and 1,385 square feet. These units would not have garages, and resident parking would be provided as surface parking. And here are some renderings of that particular proposed building. And then I'll briefly go through the renderings for the other buildings, which are proposed in a townhome style with two-car garages, and each would have four bedrooms with a total living area of about 1,584 square feet. So this is what Building Two is supposed to look like, Building Three, Building Four, and Building Five, which is the largest building on the site. And it joins the alley, the garages would face the alley. The design will introduce a contemporary architecture and a modern industrial style with varying roof lines and forms and varying materials and finishes. Here are examples provided by the architect of existing buildings that inspired the project. As an infill site under five acres, surrounded by existing development, the project has been determined to be exempt from SEQA under the provisions of the Class 32 infill exemption under the SEQA guidelines. Staff recommends that the city council conduct and close the public hearing, find the project exempt from SEQA, and approve the project by adopting the resolutions before you. The applicant is present tonight to speak on behalf of the project and answer any questions from council. I'd also be glad to answer any questions. This concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you, Michael. Let's have speakers first.
Yes, ma'am. Roxanne Janis. Janis?
Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor and city council members. You can say Janice. I was in England, I think, over the summer, and that's how they pronounce it there, but it's actually Janes. I don't usually get to sit at the podium or stand at the podium. Usually that's for our CEO, but he has COVID, so we're going to leave him home and quarantine for a few more days so he doesn't share that. But my name is Roxanne Janes. I am the operations director for San Diego Habitat for Humanity on the construction side. So normally, again, not in front of the podium, but we are truly just honored and privileged to be here and be a part of this community and to share what we have proposed on the Daisy Commons project. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer those. But again, just looking forward to getting involved and being committed and part of this community, being good neighbors.
Thank you.
Ryan Brem, or Bren?
There we go. Let me just play this slide. Is it possible to? Oh, got it. Thank you. Hello, distinguished council members and city staff. I'm Ryan Brem, the architect representing Stephen Dalton Architects and the design team on this project called Daisy Commons. Michael did a terrific job sharing all of the info and all the images that we had. I just wanted to take a little time just to give a little bit further.
Do you want to take the time off? Okay. Yes.
I just wanted to give a little bit of background on some of the design aspects that was behind the actual project. So beyond some of the layout and a lot of the statistics and meeting all the regulations, we had five main concepts that were behind this design. The first key concept was establishing a residential scale. To do that, when we're proposing 17 units, instead of putting it all in one large structure, we wanted to really go for a residential-scale community. So we broke it up into five separate buildings and spaced it out throughout the site. That was a main focus that would blend in, meant to blend in with a lot of the single-family that Michael was pointing out around the existing neighborhood. The second main one is we really wanted to engage the street and really focus on pedestrian-friendly aspects. So a lot of what you're seeing on the site plan is a lot of the main entries for all the units are facing Park Avenue, First Street, so that there's open walkways, and there's eyes on the street for safety, enhanced security, and just a pedestrian-friendly atmosphere. The three, the third main concept we wanted to focus on was trying to minimize the impact of cars or vehicles. So as Michael had pointed out, any of our surface parking, we went ahead and located specifically in the center of the site, that was a lot screened by the buildings. And then the remainder of all the parking is hidden in the enclosed garages. The other main aspect is, instead of facing all the garages to any of the main streets, we went ahead and formalized it with just one curb cut. And then the other garages were off of the very back, at the back alley. And that's also where we located the largest of the five buildings, hiding it the most from the street, so it impacted the whole scene the best.
So you have about 10 more seconds, just to let you know.
Thank you. The other two main items was sustainability and ample open space. And so as you can see, we had a whole lot of focus on.
Thank you very much.
So the next speaker is Truth.
For the record, this item was 134 pages to skim right on through. Michael said we haven't seen affordable homes since redevelopment agencies. And you know, it's funny how the state dissolves everything that just works. San Diego Habitat for Humanity, Inc. wants to build stack, but not two-packed apartments at the Town Center Trolley Square. As the United Nations Agenda 21 Plan refers to it, transit-oriented development. And the item claims, quote, "All units will be affordable to low-income households, earning less than 80% of the area median income for family four," end quote. But what is that amount per unit exactly? I want it in writing before it's approved, because no one ever says what affordable is. You can talk about the income all you want, but when the dollars continually don't go as far as they used to a month before, that doesn't mean anything. This 17-unit, three-story tall, five-building development will be next to single-family homes, and I want to know, are the property owners okay with it? Would it block their view or their sunshine? I do like that there's a fence barrier. I don't remember what kind of fence. I would like a wall. Developer wants the city to waive the parking requirements and even the personal storage space requirements. I'm going to say no, especially to less personal storage space. There could be arguments about the parking since, oh, they're going to take those empty trolleys or the guaranteed empty buses. But you know, they can't find more space to store their stuff, because you're relying on the garage as the parking spaces, and you've got zero parking spaces for guests. So that you want them to, you're going to take away their storage even more if they can't use their garage as much as they could if there wasn't a car in it. I like the community open space area and a new private driveway. Let's see, the environmental review claims that there won't be any significant effect on traffic, but that's not possible or true. There's going to be over $392,000 in development impact fees for the city, so I know approval's going to be hard to resist, one way or another. But I'd like to know what your thoughts are, Laura, about this part. Quote, "Located in a transitional zone between varying residential skills and commercial Quote, "Located in a transitional zone between varying residential skills and commercial uses, the project is designed to enhance this existing urban form. The proposed development will serve as a prototype for development along Park Avenue, which primarily consists of large-lot, single-family homes, but is zoned for multifamily residential development," end quote. So it's a prototype for an existing urban forum. You know, I was just in Little Italy yesterday, and you know, the area just feels a little bit different, but maybe that's just me. Overall, I'm going to say this is not a horrible project, but that parking and storage requirement should be fulfilled along with traffic mitigation and a guarantee on the claim of affordability. Thank you.
Next speaker is Reverend Jamie Pangman.
As we said in the invocation, the church has been partnering with Habitat, and I just kind of wanted to speak a little bit to that, especially as it was mentioned in the report that it was bequested, the land was bequested to the church for the ability to help the poor. And so after many years of trying to figure out what are we going to do with this, this was the decision that was made, was that we'd partner with Habitat to create affordable housing for those in need, given that the land was not being used at the moment to its best abilities. This, as I said, as we said in my introduction, I've been here four years. This project got off the ground right before I got here, and you'll be hearing from the person that put that together a little bit later. And we are very grateful to the city and to Habitat for Humanity for all of the things that they've been doing and showing. And it's a very exciting project, and I just hope that you'll approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last speaker I have is Rob Ridge.
All right, I think I've got the right time now. Good evening. Just a little bit of history, really. Obviously Pastor Jamie's touched on it a little bit, but Daisy Bell Radler died in two thousand and six, and she bequeathed the property to United Methodist Church. And as also Pastor Jamie said, the specific usage was for the United Methodist Church programs and to the poor. Two thousand and six. So various projects were looked at, some great ideas, but something was missing: money. The church couldn't raise the money we wanted. I had a bit of experience with Habitat in four places, Iowa, so I knew what it's like to work with them. I trusted them. And believe it or not, November twenty nineteen, I think I first met Roxanne to discuss how we could work together. It was unanimously approved by the church at a church meeting in June twenty twenty to donate the land to Habitat. Then we had something called COVID, which I think delayed a few things. And then it was interesting, two nonprofits who wanted to agree the same thing then to put it into a contract. I mean, we have a city attorney here, and although we believed in one another, we had to put things down, and that was tough. But in September last year, we approved a contract, and we're pleased now it's going to be Daisy Commons.
Thank you very much.
No further speakers, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Councilmember comments? I don't have a... Ron Hall?
Just a couple of questions, and I think I brought this up earlier. There's no sidewalks over there. What are we doing on sidewalks and street improvements?
Yes, they're building new sidewalks, pave out to the ultimate right-of-way.
Any street improvements at all?
Just the pave-out of the street.
Okay, well, that's better than nothing. Okay, I don't really have a... I've looked at this, I drove by the site, and it actually looks very good, and so I'll make the motion to approve it.
Councilmember McNallys.
Do we have something? Is there something in there? And I know I've talked about this constantly. So two things. One is going to be the garage. Do we have anything in the CCNRs or bylaws or H-way documents that preclude individuals from using the garage as storage?
Absolutely. So we've conditioned the project, so the city would be filing a notice of restrictions with that condition that would be enforceable.
And we've learned from another low-income project that's over by our plant, our Public Works Plant, that we were told it's got plenty of parking on-site, no worries. And yet every single day, both sides of the street are packed with people parking from that development. It's a total farce, it's a total lie to say that it's going to, that you can reduce parking in these, it just is. It's not, it's not, it's not true. So with that in mind, let's just be honest with ourselves and each other. And is there parking available on Park Avenue and on First Street? Is there street parking there?
There would be, we estimate that up to, there'd be up to eight spaces strictly on the frontage of the property on First and Park Avenue.
So a total of eight spaces between the two streets?
Yes, just strictly on the frontage. So that's not counting any parking across the street.
Fair enough.
Or adjacent properties.
But there is, it is legal parking on both sides of that street, those streets, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And just to answer a question for, there are a statement that somebody made, the term "significant change in traffic," it's a city term, it's a legal term, that just states that we do not have to downgrade the grading of that street or the traffic on that street. So if it's currently an A or a B, the seventeen units do not downgrade that to a C or a D, correct?
Yeah, it would not have an impact on the level of service of the street or the immediately surrounding intersections.
So obviously, there is, there's one unit there, there's going to be seventeen units, there's going to be a change, but the term "significant change" is actually, it just talks about going from an A to a B or a B to a C or whatever the case may be, correct?
Yes, nicely said.
Okay, thank you. Second the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Trotter.
All right, so a couple of comments. I actually think it's a beautiful project. I think the architect's done a wonderful job with the design. I've personally have built projects like this down in Golden Hill, North Park, more in the city of San Diego, as things have changed with the state of California and what they're requiring us to do and what is allowed ministerially by the developers and also by approval. And so some of the things they're asking for today, so anybody understands, is because of these density bonuses that are allowed, they get four density bonuses. And one of them is a parking reduction, one of them is a setback reduction, one of it's an increase in units that are allowed, and the last one is the setback, building within the setback area in there. So it's all part of this project and what's happening here. I do have a couple of questions, Michael, if you can help me to, just for clarity. You said eight surface spots, right?
Yes.
So one of those spots is a handicap parking stall, correct?
Yes.
And the other one is an offload, right? So how does that allow that to be a parking spot if it's an offload spot? Is it a terminology thing or is it just, because really no one can use that spot, right? It's an offload for the handicap parking.
Let me go back to the site plan, sorry.
It's a little bit of semantics, but it's really not eight spots that are usable. It's an offload spot. It's the one right there, right there, yeah. So the EV one to your right is the handicap spot, the one to the left in the other cursor is an offload spot. So it's not an actual parking spot, right? I mean, is it in your code, planning codes? I don't know how it works.
No, so I apologize. It was a misinterpretation of the site plan. So in effect, there would be, if that's the case, if it is strictly offloading, I can bring up the civil drawings, but if that's the case, then it would only be seven surface parking spaces.
Okay. I'm pointing out, obviously, you mentioned about the number of spots, so I'm just, I want to get some clarity because you're telling me in our, in planning code or whatever, that that's not a legal spot, right? If it's an offload spot.
No, the striped offloading area is not a legal parking spot.
So a little clarity there. So back for parking for you, buddy, one less spot.
Makes you feel better, thank you.
You're very welcome. This is actually for the fire chief. Chief, I'm not sure if you're going to entirely know this answer, the fire marshal. So on the plans, page A 1.2, Michael, is actually the access, the fire access plan, and you're not going to have it on your slides.
Okay.
It's going to be in our workshop, in our, here. So the setback on the west side of the property there, on the access plan, they're showing a fire truck pulling a hose one hundred and fifty feet through that setback. When I look at the landscaping plan, we have trees and landscaping and everything else. So can someone explain to me how you're going to pull a hose through all the landscaping and trees and everything else realistically? Not saying it's impossible, but are you going to pull through the trees and the landscaping?
Pulling hose through trees that are full grown is a non-issue for us. We navigate hose through, if you think about it, the most extreme is down through the river bottom where there's extremely limited access. So our personnel are pretty capable at getting hose in and out. Fortunately, it's flexible, but we can get in and out of pretty tight spaces.
Yep. To me, access in the center of the project makes more sense. There's an FDC on the, on Park Avenue there that I think you would hook up to, if not one of the two hydrants that are on First Avenue, right? To get your water supply.
Yeah, and so when they show the hose deployed, it's just, is to demonstrate that that's our pre-connect and that with a pre-connected, a pre-connected hose line coming from our engine, that we could reach certain areas, and that's part of the fire code, that we have to then embed in some restrictions or some standards when they're presenting their plan. So it's not, it doesn't mean necessarily that's exactly where we're going to deploy hose from. It's just an example to show kind of a scale as far as how far we could stretch hose. But we're not limited to one hundred and fifty feet, and we're able to get pretty creative with how we attack fires.
Right. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And lastly, Michael, you mentioned something about Building One and the trash. Can you, can you go back to explaining that so?
Yes.
In better clarity? Because you actually confused me a little bit.
Okay, let me go back.
I have questions about, but I just wanted to hear this Building One trash thing again.
Let me go back to the site plan. So just to kind of go over their plan for trash collection, and this, by the way, was an issue with planning with their initial submittal. Our preference would have been that they provide individual trash collection for all the units, that they mentioned that it was necessary to include this trash enclosure here at this location. But this trash enclosure would, and we did try to work with them on an alternate location, but because of stormwater quality and then also access issues, this was the best location. We didn't want them to place, another option was to place it here, but there's an adjacent home right over on the adjoining property that is built pretty much right up against the property line here. So we didn't want to impact that resident with this trash enclosure and the odors and noise, of course, that are associated with that sort of structure.
Okay.
So the placement of the trash enclosure was ultimately.
Just kind of...
Decided to be here so that, and then unfortunately, so the residents of Building One will have to.
Okay, so let's go, that's what I'm kind of getting to here. So ultimately, you're trying, you're telling me that this trash enclosure is really only because Building One doesn't have onsite trash collection, i.e. a garage or something of that nature, right?
Because they don't have a garage where to take in the totes and store them.
Right. So when you talk about tote, are we saying that every one of these other units are going to get totes to get picked up by the trash company?
All of the other units would get totes, and then this one will have a separate trash collection through the trash bins.
Okay. That's why I'm bringing all this up, trying to...
Building Five as well will have their own individual trash.
Their individual totes.
Building Five will have individual that they'll take out Trash Collection Day.
And place them where?
As building, along the driveway.
Along the driveway?
And along the...
Well, in front of the garages. How about that?
Okay.
Yeah, in front of the garages.
Yes, along the garages.
Okay, so there's access into, all right, so there is access from the, what was that, Third Street Alley?
It's an alley.
Yes, there's access here.
So how are they... It's behind that truck, SoCal Truck business.
Yeah. Michael, how are they going to empty them?
So the property management company established by the HOA will pull them out on Trash Collection Day.
The dumpsters.
Typically, it's the landscape company that also does a lot of their landscape maintenance. I spoke with Habitat.
Are you talking about the dumpsters or are you talking about the totes?
No, the dumpsters themselves.
Yeah, that's what I thought you were talking about.
Yeah, the dumpsters themselves that serve Building One, those would be taken out to the alley.
So what's the frequency of the pickup? Once a week, six days a week?
I'm not sure about that particular detail, but perhaps that could be it.
You're starting to spark more logistic issues here and trying to get into the weeds, but this actually go a different direction than what I was going to go originally with this, part of this conversation. So I think Hall's on to something there. How do these things get out of that enclosure? How do they get down to the alley, right? The trash man has to do that, that you said the landscape person's going to do this. It's a logistic thing, obviously, with HOA or with the residents at that point. But, okay, so back to Building One. So Building One, are they not the accessible units also?
Building One, yes, they'd be the accessible units.
Right, so it doesn't mean obviously a person in a wheelchair or someone with a handicap is necessarily going to rent those, but those units are obviously adaptable or those units are available for persons with disabilities and how they're constructed, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so again...
All the other units would have stairwells.
I'm trying to be a little bit pragmatic here, but you're asking the person with potentially the most disabilities to go the furthest distance. Is that fair to say that?
I could, you could characterize it that way.
Okay. And then you made a comment a second ago about the end of this fire lane here, that it did not want to go there because of the resident on the other side, trying to be a good neighbor, not to have the smells there.
Yes.
If there's a window or something along that wall, and their house is very close to the property line, right? But as I look at this Unit A 1, A.1, which is the elevation, the front door is right across from the, is there any windows on that building, on that elevation, that face that dumpster?
Let me see.
I'm looking at the front door, so at minimum, there's at least one opening.
So the garage would be faced in one nearest that trash collection location.
But on the vertical, on the vertical elevation, on the west side of that elevation, is there any windows?
Not on this side. There are, not on the garage side, maybe on the, I can pull those up if you'd like.
It's a three-story building, right?
It's a three-story building. Do you want me to pull up the elevation drawings?
If we don't have the answer, yes, I would like to see a photo of it if it's, if we have it.
Absolutely.
Or maybe the architect can answer that question simply.
Would you like to answer this question?
So we asked these precise questions to the architect with their initial submittal, and they thought that this was, this location was justified, and it's part of their density bonus request.
Hundred percent, and I prefaced that initially right on my question. I understand that, and I do believe that obviously they're in rights to do that, obviously with the state of California here. And I think it's, and I have no problem with the request itself, I'm just trying to be pragmatic on the location, if there's not a better location for this to serve the residents.
Wouldn't it be wiser just to move that on the other side and move the building down? Because you haven't built it yet.
So two of the main things as we were working with staff over the months was, it's for collection, the HOA, will property management bring the dumpsters right to the alley so it's the shortest distance for trash to easily...
Trust me a finger when you're saying that, or you...
The HOA is going to bring it out each week?
Yeah.
That's the plan with the property management company, that they would bring it out once a week, right to the alley, and the dumpsters could be picked up easily from that location with the trash trucks. The other locations with the noise for the adjacent neighbor, as well as putting it on First Street, we didn't want anyone to be just looking at a trash enclosure. So those were the two main items of why it wasn't at the end of the drive aisle or anywhere on First Street or Park. The idea of the smell and the view of the trash took precedent for the entire development and the community as a whole. That Building One has their flats, they do not have garages.
I understand, that's why I brought this up.
And they can bring their trash there once a week, and then they can have it wheeled out once a week.
Mr. Bren, what size are the totes? How many gallons, you guys? Sixty gallons, ninety gallons? What are the size of the totes?
The ones in the garage are the standard size. The ones in the garage are the standard size, but the, the large ones are there, I think they're six yard.
Oh, that's actually a bigger problem because in your plan, it says three and a half. So if it's six yard, it won't even fit down that, that walkway.
So there's, how many, how many does it say?
It says three dumpsters, three point, three and a half yards.
Okay, so three. So we have recycle, green and rubbish.
And in your, in your plan, A 6.3, it says he's a three yard dump, three and a half yard dumpsters.
Yeah.
Which are three and a half feet wide, which will fit down that five foot walkway.
Yes.
But you're showing me, telling me they're six now.
I was adding them all up. I apologize there.
All right. So where I'm going with this, you got, this is sparking a whole new thing, is you're telling me that this trash receptacle is, this dumpster is only for building one. Right? Is that, are we clear on this? Are we, are we?
Yes.
Okay. So why are we providing a three and a half yard dumpster for each of the three when we're only providing totes in each of the individual units? Why can't we just provide totes at building one with an enclosure, maybe in that landscaping area right off the fire access?
So in building one, there are four total units. There's flats on top. So for four units, if we had to provide three bins times, that's 12, 12 totes. You'd like an enclosure next to building one that.
I don't know. I'm just trying to give you some different options and starting to see what, what's available.
The, the studies we had done is the enclosure that that would take is actually a little larger than what we're showing there. And then we're in back to the same location is that it's affecting either the space for the playground, First Street, or the, or just as far to the end of the driveway. And then it's also very far to pull it to a location where the trash truck would pick up the dumpster.
Aren't they going down the alley to pick up the trash for the other, the other garages? Down that fire access?
We already have, I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead if you want.
Building two, A and one, they're going to be putting their trash cans out.
Right.
In the fire lane.
In the fire lane. So all they would have to do is put the trash cans in front of the building one and just roll them out there. And there you are. You'd have to have your people supposedly bring them in. But if you did that, then you solved the problem. And they could actually share a trash can. I mean, there's nothing saying they can't share a trash can. They don't each have individual trash cans. Because they're driving it, they're taking it halfway down the street, halfway down, you know, literally halfway down the street to, to dump the trash. Well, you know, to me it. And again, you have the right to do this. Don't get me wrong.
No, between both Councilman Trotter and Councilman Hall, that solution, if that is a sticking point and that item needs to be conditioned, is that something that you?
Did the waste management review this trash collection during, at all?
Yes.
Okay. So who from waste management reviewed and approved it?
They have not approved it yet.
Have not approved.
It's in process.
It's in process. And this with operations manager or something, I assume?
We have a couple, um, responses back and forth that it's in review.
Okay. Can you tell me what those responses were back and forth then?
There's that they're reviewing it. There's no comments.
No comments currently.
Right.
Okay, well, um, I'll jump in here.
Go for it. Thank you.
And I, I think we have an issue with the trash.
Okay.
So maybe that's, you know, what we resolve. If council comments are clear on that part. And, you know, I would say if somebody has a disability and they live in building one and they are, you know, in a wheelchair or something, that would be a long haul for, for them to go to that, that area. So hopefully there's a better solution for trash pickup that is close to where they actually live. And that's what I think the council would like to see. Um, right, council?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so and we have, are there any more comments beyond that about the project?
Well, we're not trying to micromanage you either, just so you know, but I just picture a guy in a wheelchair dragging a trash can all the way down the.
Trash bag.
I'm sorry?
Trash bag.
Trash bag out all the way down there.
Well, and then we also know that, you know, unless they, it's key access only, everybody's in the facility is going to use it. So it, it makes sense to have something closer to them for us. But yeah, beautiful project and we are excited to have Habitat, even though this didn't sound like it so much. We are excited to have Habitat for Humanity in Santee and, um, you know, the, the church is just wonderful. They do a lot of things for the community, including Naomi's closet, which I donate to all the time. So we have a motion in a second. Can we vote, please?
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Moving on to new business, item nine, resolution awarding the construction contract for the citywide CMP lining and rehabilitation program. 2023 CIP 2023 dash 20 project and determining the project is categorically exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act per state SEQA guidelines, section 15301C. Engineering, uh, engineering director Carl Schmidt will present.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council. Um, as the title said, staff is bringing forward a resolution of approval of our latest construction contract for CIP lining within the city and an exemption from SEQA and other related items. Um, I want to give you a little bit of history and background of the program. Those that have you've been here for a long time know this has been a long time. We've been at this for a decade. This all kind of accumulated in 2010 to 2012, where we had five CMP failures that were pretty significant. And at that time, staff came before council with a option for doing a study on all those pipes, cammering them. What we found is we had 276 pipes totaling 6.5 miles need, in need of repair. Keep in mind, these were pipes that were installed corrugated metal, CMP for short, back in the 50s and 60s. We no longer install CMP and haven't for decades, just because the lifespan isn't as quite as good as RCP. And then from 2013 until last year, we have since relined and repaired 115 pipelines totaling 3.1 miles, very significant. Through 17 different contracts totaling, you know, 9.4 million dollars. So we've made a great effort due to council's commitment to doing improvements to these. At that point, we decided to do an updated CMP assessment in 2021 to re-camera all the remaining pipes. And we still found we had 126 remaining pipelines in need of repair, although not as drastic. The estimated cost for those remaining pipes is 10.32 million. Good news, total CMP pipeline replacement, we're now 63% complete. We're, we're far ahead, I think, of any other agency in the county of San Diego at this point. In fact, they often look to us for guidance on how to do these types of repairs. And I think some of them are actually using our specs and design guides for it. So we're pretty proud of it. Just a little history. This is one of the major projects that happened in 2010. We had a pretty significant storm event and a pretty significant collapse of two 72-inch pipes. That's what I think culminated the need to start doing these repairs and why it's important. This item before you, um, again, is for the award. On September 14th, 2023, the city clerk opened two bids received for the lining and rehabilitation program. The lowest responsive and responsible bid was received by SandCon Technology, Inc. in the amount of 1.2 million roughly, which is 7.6% lower than the engineer's estimate, which was good news. Um, staff is also recommending city council award the construction contract to SandCon in that amount. And also authorize change orders, uh, to be approved in the amount of $300,334, 25% for unforeseen items and additional items. Those additional items will include, um, next, the next highest priority pipes on the line as funding is available when we're complete with what's in the contract. And that contract includes 22 more pipes being conducted with this, uh, contract. Just a quick breakdown of the locations, um, shown in red. Just know it's kind of small, hard to see, but we're doing some Birchcrest Boulevard, Santana Street, Magnolia, Mast. Some on the Carlton Oaks Bridge adjacent to the Padre Dam Operation Yard, um, over on Mission Gorge Road. Uh, Woodside Avenue, Huntington Circle, Auburn Way and Graves Avenue, and another one on Mission Gorge Road. With that, staff is recommending city council award the construction contract, authorize the city manager execute all the documents, authorize the director of engineering to approve change orders, not to exceed 300 and $300,334 or 25%. And determine the project is category exempt from environmental and SEQA. With that, I'm available for any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Any speaker slips?
No, ma'am.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Councilmember Trotter, can you lock in your vote, please? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Thank you, Carl. And I think we're done with, uh, speaker slips for the evening. So we will move on to city council reports. Councilmember Hall.
Today, I went to the ZEB, which is Zero Emission Buses Conference. And we, MTS was showing off their 60-foot electric bus, which is amazing. It's going to go through the South Bay. Those are the one with the things in the middle that turn. So when they turn it, the bus drivers actually say it's easier to drive. But the, what I was going to bring up mainly is free ride day is, uh, so if you want to take the grandkids or take the kids on a bus ride, Wednesday, October 4th is, uh, Clean Air Day and it's Free Ride Day. So you can, we won't harass you about fares.
Thank you. Councilmember Trotter.
No comment. No, uh, report me.
You can have one. It's okay. Councilmember Trot, I'm McNellis.
We look a lot alike, I know. And by the way, they never mess with anybody about paying their fares. So that's a problem.
Actually, if you have a minute, on, uh, I think that, I don't.
Oh, did they hassle you?
No, they hassle me all the time. That's nothing. Um, I was kind of like Sand Egg over there. But we actually did a enforcement on the Elcon Station and we had a 35% fare evasion rate. And we, they, they arrested three people, uh, a couple of sex offenders, one person from Oregon. Trying to dig up the, I don't have it in front of me, but so basically we looked at 900 people and they are going out. That is a new, East County is going to be going after the four councilmen out here, council people out here are trying to make fare enforcement a top priority.
Wouldn't that be wonderful? Um, I was, I did attend Sand Egg and I just wanted to give a shout out to the mayor of San Marcos, Rebecca Jones, for her tenacity. She did an amazing job with reeling in the chairwoman of Sand Egg and making sure her voice was heard. And I, personal opinion, I think they were trying to railroad the decision of removing the, what do they call it? The, um, RUC. The road usage charge that used to be the VMT vehicle mileage charge. And because the motion was to remove that from the language altogether. And in discussing it before the meeting, it was kind of decided, well, wait a minute, we need to, it was too specific. And the chairperson tried to push that, that motion through real, real quick and say, we don't need discussion on it. Realized, you know what? We need to change that motion just a little bit, tweak it a little bit, just to state or any type of mileage charge, no matter what you call it from this. Um, because my heart of hearts, I know that's exactly what they were going to do is say, all right, we'll remove the road usage charge. But now we're going to call it a street usage charge and we're going to run with that. And so I, I just, I truly applaud her tenacity. Uh, not backing down of making sure that everybody, you know, that, that the voices were heard. And, uh, it did pass, so that has been removed. Um, but it, it, it wasn't, it wasn't easy. There was definitely a pushback. There was definitely a, a, a number of people trying to play some games. And I, I, I thought it was actually quite comical to watch how it all unfolded. But I literally was laughing out loud at certain points just because I couldn't believe how crazy some, some may get.
Welcome to Sand Egg meetings.
It's been a lot of years. It's been 10 years since I've been to Sand Egg meetings.
May I ask who the four were that voted?
Lemon Grove, Jack Shu from La Mesa.
Absolutely. Um, I can't, I honestly don't remember, but he was, he was absolutely the one that.
The mayor from Encinitas and there one more. Oh, my gosh. Yep, National City. Those were the four.
Yeah. So it was.
Mayor from National City.
It was a little crazy, but, um, but the day was one with, with I, what I believe is the right, uh, the right, uh, ending. And I thought one of the funniest things that she, Mr., our council member, she said was that, on, on another subject, he was talking about making sure that all vehicles that are, are at the, uh, the shipyards, at the ports are all electric vehicles. And once again, Rebecca Jones did a, she, she had done her homework. So she called Republic and said, hey, are your trash trucks going to be ready five years ahead of California's schedule so that, you know, that they can be all electric? And they said, we are at the forefront of electric vehicles for trash pickup, but not just no, but hell no. That there's no way, there's no way based on the weight, um, the Mike, uh, miles traveled. They call it windshield time of an electric truck. It's just not, it's not possible. It's not plausible. The technology is not there. And councilmember she stated that, uh, well, I saw an article that states, you know, the technology is there. And I said, well, I saw an article that shows you have flying cars right now. They exist. I saw an article on it. They exist. Doesn't mean it's financially responsible or, or plausible to utilize a flying vehicle for any of these types of things. So that's a, that's just a moot comment. And he actually laughed and he looked at me and said, all right, good job. But he still voted no. So, uh, it was, it really was a, it was an interesting morning. Um, and I, I just can't say enough great things about, about how strongly, uh, Mayor Jones fought and it was, it was really fun to watch.
Thank you very much. Um, as mentioned, we were at League of California Cities last week, their annual conference. So councilmember Hall, myself, the mayor, um, city manager and assistant city clerk, James. And, um, there were, you know, there were some sessions that I was, what am I doing here for sure? Um, but there were some valuable ones, ones addressing homelessness, uh, you know. The most elected officials in the state of California are Democrats. But we all feel the same way about our homeless issues in our communities and, um, something needs to change. And, and I think we're at least united in that. And, and we spent a lot of time talking about, talking to other cities about what they do. And a lot of them do have ordinances. We were one of the first to have our ordinance in the river bottom. But a lot of them have some unique ordinances. So it was interesting. And, um, what was the other good one? Oh, well.
Transfer care, though. Talk about that. Never mind.
Not on this, not tonight. But, but Ron and I have been, um, I'll just say briefly that we're on, we've been attending, um, transfer of care meetings and there was another one yesterday. And, and maybe we'll have our fire chief do an update for us on that.
See, I tried to.
So we've been having meetings with, with Grossmont Hospital for, since the beginning of the year. It started out as a very small group, myself, Chief Butts from Lakeside and Chief Coe from Heartland Fire, who represents El Cajon, Lemon Grove, and La Mesa. And we were just discussing the constant issue that we're having with offload delays. And we're, it's, it's a very collaborative group in looking at strategies that we could implement holistically to try to decrease our overall wall times. We call them wall times. Um, and I, I do have to applaud Grossmont because we made some asks of them, very specific asks, months ago. We asked for them to change the way that they were reporting information and to really start to hyper-focus on the really long offload delays. We're not going to fix offload delays. It's just, it is, it's a gigantic problem that has been around for decades now. Uh, but we can fix small little things within the offload day delays. And so we, we made a specific ask. Hey, let's focus right now on these two hour plus, then we'll go to 90 minute plus, then we'll go to 60 minute plus. And, and they performed. They are the busiest hospital in the county of San Diego. And they have some of the best times at those outlier, uh, offload delays. Now, they're not perfect, but they are making an effort and we appreciate it and we are seeing the numbers tick down. We still have some pretty exhaustively long ones. Last night we had a two and a half hour one with our EMT unit. Uh, but they're becoming less frequent, which is, which is good. So I got to applaud them for their efforts. Our thought is that if the busiest hospital in the county of San Diego can make these improvements, then every single other hospital in the county of San Diego should. then every single other hospital in the county of San Diego should be able to replicate what they're doing. So, appreciate the attendance from two of our council members, and the, the meeting group has grown to be pretty significant, but we're getting some good work done.
Yeah, Kaiser is probably the next one they need to work on, but just so people know, offload delays are literally, the fire department has to stand there and wait to hand over the patient. And having sat on that wall as a patient, it can be, it's a little amazing sometimes on how long, you're just sitting there, and there's two paramedics standing there with you as you're doing that. So, I kind of, and Chief has been working on this for a long time, but now we've actually got enough cooperation. There's no arguing, which is really nice. Everybody gets along, and it's all about solve the problem, and that's what we like to see.
Great job, great job. And, and for the record, I do like modern Americana better than Americana, so I will start using that. And I do not like the word urban, but staff already knows that. No other report from me? City manager, report?
Just very quickly, council, you've heard about a couple of items that are coming up next week, but we do have one exciting activity that's happening this Saturday night here in Santee. If you missed it, Disney's Coco is being shown in Town Center Community Park. It starts at 6:45, but the gates open at 4 with plenty of other activities. So if you are sitting at home wondering what to do with the kids over the weekend, please come down and join us at Town Center Community Park. Staff is working really hard on our first movie, and if it goes well, there are more in the works. Thank you very much.
Thank you. City attorney, report?
No report.
Thank you. All right, that concludes all the items listed on the agenda. This meeting is now adjourned.